Before we start, the City Council just met on five closed session items and is reporting out on one item. By unanimous vote, the City Council passed a motion with Councilmember White recusing to approve payment of $12,000 to the International Woodworkers Local 398 for parcels number 507-362-025 for the termination of the lease. All right. Good evening. And thank you for viewing the September 18th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference via Zoom. We'll start with the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods or among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. And if you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman.
Present.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we'll go to ceremonial matters. We have one ceremonial matter today, a proclamation in honor of the North Coast Stand Down to September 20th through 28th, 2024. And this proclamation will be read by Vice Mayor Stillman.
Thank you. The North Coast Stand Down, September 26th to 28th, 2024. Whereas during wartime, exhausted combat soldiers can be ordered to stand down and go from the battlefield to secure a place for rest and recovery. And whereas today, a stand-down is a grassroots event designed to help veterans and their families get medical, employment, social services, legal, and other types of information and assistance. And whereas the most effective veterans programs are community-based, nonprofit, Veterans Helping Veterans programs like the North Coast Stand Down, the program's goal is to provide needed services to veterans and their families. And whereas many of the American homeless adults have served their country in the armed services, and the North Coast Stand Down is committed to giving homeless veterans access to additional short and long-term resources like shelter and drug and alcohol recovery and opportunities. And whereas previous North Coast Stand Down events have helped hundreds of veterans get the services to which they are entitled, the 2024 North Coast Stand Down will continue to make a positive difference for our local veterans and their families and will raise community awareness of the needs of returning active-duty soldiers. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council, the city of Arcata hereby honors the North Coast Stand Down organization and volunteers for addressing the needs of North Coast veterans. The council encourages all veterans and their families in need of services to attend the 2024 North Coast Stand Down on Thursday, September 26th through Saturday, September 28th at the Humboldt County Fairgrounds in Ferndale. It's dated September 18th, 2024, and is signed by Mayor Matthews. And it's going to be picked up by Ann Poole. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again for acknowledging us. This is our 18th year of this presentation, and the event offers all our veterans and their immediate families, not only do we give them providers that give them information for resources that they may not have normally, we also feed them three meals a day, we have clothing, pet services, light medical, light dental, overnight if they need a place to stay, and they're more than welcome to bring their immediate families, and we'd like to have us come and go all weekend. I thank you.
Okay, now we will have council and staff reports. First item is receive an update from Emily Sinkhorn, Director of Environmental Services, on the 2024 Call for Art.
Great. Well, good evening, council members. Environmental Services Department has been implementing the 2024 Call for Art with our local arts agency, Playhouse Arts, and we wanted to give an update because we'll have some exciting new public art in our community this fall. So our, this Call for Art follows a Call for Art last year, which we'll talk about in a second, but those really followed and was in line with the Arcata Strategic Arts Plan, which your council adopted in November of 2021. And that plan really expanded and formalized the city's support for arts and artists and also how we would partner with community partners to implement more art in the community. So we had a successful first Call for Art, and when we're saying Call for Art, the city had funding available for artists to propose and then implement a structured, structured call. So last year, 14, 16 artists painted 20 fire hydrants in the downtown and north town and Creamery District area. We had a celebration, we have great brochures that really highlight this great work, and it's fun to be walking around town and seeing this unique art. This call was structured in that we had a specific canvas of fire hydrants and people proposed to paint them. Following that call, we talked about how could we make that even more accessible to artists that work with different mediums? So we identified funding for this next call. The, your council had allocated funding from ARPA for art and beautification, and that is the funding that we were able to utilize for this call. We really partnered with the Playhouse throughout this process. And then we have formed a art review panel of local arts and culture leaders. Before the ASAP, our Parks and Rec Committee would receive art proposals and give feedback, and they didn't feel like they had the content connections in the community to really be reviewing art. And so that panel has been a diverse group, and we've had a lot of helpful conversations to learn from the first call, support this call, and also for reviewing proposals as they come to the city. So they really, that panel really helped shape this call. The Parks and Rec Committee is still part of the process of reviewing proposals to see if it fits in that public space, if it's appropriate for safety or fits the context of a park. And so that's just the process for how artists are selected. So we wanted to share where some of this new art may be implemented soon. So we have, these are two muralists, and we had a great Carlson Park ribbon cutting last Friday, and Julia Finkelstein will be creating a mural on the new restroom that will be opening here in a couple weeks. Lauren Wheeler will be working on a retaining wall right where the trail, the Bay Trail meets Alliance and Fourth Street and a lot of pedestrian traffic to the high school. So these are really high-visibility locations. We're planning a couple sculptures with artist James Smith and John King, one on H Street by the plaza in between 8th and 9th, and another at the north town kind of entrance to Arcata between G and H Street. Centro Del Pueblo is proposing murals within the public right-of-way, the fire hydrant sidewalks around the sanctuary garden at F and 11th, and David Mata is proposing a mural on the Arcata library with a really celebrating California native basketry. And then we had one event that already occurred, and that was with the Arcata Threshold Choir. They hosted Melanie de Moore for a community singing event and singing circle at Redwood Park last weekend. So these are the selected artists that will be implementing art around town this fall. And just as a reminder, the city also continually accepts rolling art proposals through the Art Around Arcata program. You can go to our website for more information for that. Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to ask about H Street, and there's two areas for sculpture there. So will those both be done by James Smith?
We're proposing one sculpture on that block and then really finalizing the other sidewalk wells. So we had, last year or a year and a half ago, had replanted trees and done sidewalk ADA improvements on that stretch, and we were either planning art, bike parking, or of making a more walkable surface for all of those sidewalk wells. So we're just planning one sculpture on H Street.
Because I think there's three areas there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Are there any plans to replace the damaged art that was over here on the corner of G and 8th with that car that went through there?
At this time, we're not proposing that location for placing art back. It has gotten too much activity in that area, and so we're, the bases for the other sculptures will be based on a similar type base, but at this time, we're not proposing putting art back in that exact planter.
All right. First of all, I'm so excited about painting of that fence on Alliance. That has been like one of the things that I've wanted to do since I got on the council, so I'm so excited. And also, I want to say that my favorite mural in Eureka is the one that I think Jenna Castas did, that is the big map. And, you know, as we're talking about wayfaring signage coming to Arcata, it would be so cool if someone would do a mural of a map of like Arcata that takes you to the Creamery or the Plaza or you to Valley West, but that's just, I'm just putting that out there.
So, yes, I just want to mention, because Arcata artisans is really interested in trying to figure out if they can put something together for one of those half-moons that is on the sidewalk. So how would I direct them? To you or to the Playhouse?
Yeah, you can direct them to the Environmental Services Department, and also just for anyone that's interested can Google the Art Around Arcata, and we have a page that comes up on our website, all about the process for proposing art.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Kimberly, did you have something?
I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the upcoming sculpture.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and we will move on to item B, which is to receive an update from David Lawyer, Director of Community Development, on the Climate Action Plan. Can we have an update? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My presentation is on the Regional Climate Action Plan, just a little update on our progress here and, you know, trying to get some, some feedback on it. It's very important, but not as fun as public art. I'll acknowledge that, but, but very important content. This is really truly a regional collaboration. It's one of the best regional collaborations that I've been involved in, led by the county. They've really done a lot of work to try and include all of the jurisdictions and a number of agencies that are, that are also involved in various elements of being able to implement the Climate Action Plan once it's adopted. I'm borrowing the presentation that was put together by the county. I want to thank Megan Acevedo who put this content together. I did modify it slightly from her, so I apologize if you've already watched this at another jurisdiction. But really, we're taking this on the, you know, it's kind of like a roadshow. We're going to each of the boards and the councils and trying to share with them where we're at because we're at kind of a critical juncture. Just real quickly, the history of the Climate Action Plan, you know, it's been in process for quite some time. The county hired a firm to help us with the, the environmental work because the jurisdictions were really interested in making sure that the Climate Action Plan was a qualified cap and that we would be able to do the sequoque streamlining and all of those other benefits of having a qualified cap. And we were struggling to make that connection as, as that firm came on to do this environmental work. And so we, we really, as a, as a region, decided, hey, let's redirect some of these funds and start over. And so that firm who's done climate action plans in, in other jurisdictions then shifted gears and started working on the Climate Action Plan. The one that we started in 2019 had a lot of good legwork, though, that we were able to leverage into the current draft Climate Action Plan. And one of the critical shifts was that previously, we were measuring greenhouse gas reductions by jurisdiction, and one of the big concerns that was coming up was, well, you know, what if this jurisdiction doesn't perform? What happens to the cap? You know, what if that jurisdiction doesn't perform? And so on and so forth. And so we took that feedback that we were getting to produce qualified cap, to make sure it was ambitious, to ensure that it could, you know, satisfy the EIR requirements of being, you know, defensible, and also trying to address this concept of, you know, how do we, you know, how do we make sure that we're meeting those Climate Action Plan goals even though we, you know, have different capacities in the different jurisdictions to do so? And produced a draft that is now out, it's on the county's website, and we have, we're in sort of the pre-EIR phase draft for that. It's a very dense document, but I think a very organized document, and I hope the council has had a chance to, to review and, and read some of that. If you haven't, don't despair. We're at this point near the end of this draft for general consumption, and we're about to go into the environmental review component to this. And as you recall from, you know, our environmental review process for the general plan, there's a lot that can happen during that environmental review process. And so the county's really taking the lead on this. They're going to be adopting the EIR for the Regional Climate Action Plan, and as they do that, we'll be able to provide additional comments. The public will be able to provide additional comments and, and tweak and hone the, the draft that we have available to us now. Currently, the plan is to have this draft available, or I'm sorry, the EIR available in October, and that will be running that process through June of 2024 when the documents anticipated be adopted. June of 2025, yeah. I was just reading that. We're actually going back in time to adopt the document. Thank you for that, Joanna. A couple of key points that you'll see are new in this document is that we did update the greenhouse gas emissions inventory and tied it to 2022. Previously, we were using a baseline of 2012, and so we did that, that's, you know, kind of a technical model that was used to do that. I won't go into the detail about that, but it did address all of the major areas of greenhouse gas emissions. And as you'll note on this slide, transportation is sort of the, the largest sector, accounting for almost three-quarters of the county's greenhouse gases. The current cap has very achievable goals, they're ambitious goals, but we believe that they are achievable. And it's important that they're achievable because that's where the connection between having a Climate Action Plan and having an EIR that defends that Climate Action Plan comes into play. If your goals aren't achievable, if you have aspirational goals that you can't demonstrate, there's substantial evidence in the record that you can actually meet those goals, then your EIR is, is invalid, and you get sued, and you spend a lot of time to, to fail in the courts. And so we really worked closely with the, the consultants in the county and the, and the region to make sure that the goals that we have set for this Climate Action Plan are achievable but ambitious. The other thing that I wanted to point out to you in this document is that we've identified a split between measures that would be applied in urban areas versus rural areas. There are certain transportation policies, for example, that make sense in an urbanized area that wouldn't make sense, you know, in southern Humboldt, for example. And so we've broken these out between urban and rural measures to make sure that everybody has realistic goals that they can accomplish in those areas. I also wanted to bring this up because there was, the way that the draft is currently written, it seems to imply that the entire unincorporated county is considered rural, and we all know that there's McKinleville, there's Cotten, there are areas that are urbanized that are in the county, and that is one area that the, the draft is going to clean up, that we've already gotten some feedback on that, the county's received feedback on that. So we're well aware that that, that needs to be clarified, but that the urban measures are intended to apply in all areas that are urbanized, not necessarily the, the formerly incorporated jurisdictions. Last, I'll walk you through just a couple of, a couple more slides to talk about what we're proposing here. The Climate Action Plan shows the 2030 target and the 2045 targets that were set by the state, and it shows our 1990 baseline emissions that were modeled. And the blue line is kind of our adjusted forecast. So this was based on that 2022 model that we, that we did. And so you can see just, just the reductions that have happened, you know, over the course of time, just sort of naturally based on improvements, you know, RCEA was a huge component to this, and, you know, changes in, in vehicles emissions and those kinds of things have done a lot of work to get us towards those targets. But if you were to take that and stretch it out, business as usual, we don't do anything else, we're going to fall far short of the, the targets, and that's where this adjusted forecast line shows without any other measures. The reduction measures that are incorporated into the Climate Action Plan actually make up that gap and get us so that we're meeting these targets. The only thing I'll say about this slide is that there are many different areas that we're approaching with the measures, so that we're addressing, you know, a whole host of different sectors. It's not, you know, targeted in one sector. And it does involve sequestration, which was something that was really important to our region in particular, in particular because of the, the work that, you know, many of us are doing in our community forests, and also there's a lot of conceptual models out there anyway for how restoration and salt marsh habitats can be involved in sequestration. And so while we don't have the details really refined for what that would look like, it is a component to this Climate Action Plan, and so that was reflective of the work that we've done since 2019. The next concept that I wanted to point out that's in the Climate Action Plan is the formation of this Regional Climate Committee. This is a, again, it's, it's conceptual at this point, it's not really well-fleshed out. We'll need to, as a region, really define what this looks like, but the, the only way that we're going to be able to perform on these measures is if we are, have someone who's responsible for tracking our implementation, someone who's responsible for moving these, these measures forward. And so we're, we're proposing to have a program manager who's actually overseeing this, and the discussions initially were to have the jurisdictions all kind of collaborate to at least fund a portion of that job to start. That position would likely need to, you know, ultimately secure grant funds or, or develop a funding stream to, to ensure that that position could stay in existence. And that program manager would likely work for or report to an existing or a new JPA that's designed and intended to, to oversee and, and make decisions about the Climate Action Plan. This is a regional effort, it involves all of the jurisdictions, we have JPAs that are made up of the boards of each jurisdiction, and so that's a natural area for us to, to look to, to house that, that responsibility. So yeah, more to come on that. Certainly if the council has input they want to provide tonight, feel free to, but that'll be an evolving conversation. Regardless of what the decision is on that and, and what the decision timeline is for rolling that out, we all recognize that the staff of the jurisdictions are going to have to continue to participate, and, and luckily, we've got a, a great bunch that's developed a really good working relationship over the last several years to, to try and implement this, and so we're all committed to working together and, and making this work for our communities. Okay, so here's the timeline again. Again, we're rolling out the notice of prep, will be underway for the EIR, and it's anticipated by June of 2025 is when we'll be adopting that. So there's really no action, this is maybe a misnomer, today's actions. Certainly if the, you know, council has input, we'll take that and report that back to our consultants and, and the county. But this is really just to, you know, acknowledge that we've now received the draft, Regional Climate Action Plan can certainly take public input if you're interested in doing that. There are going to be lots of other venues for public input as well, and that's my report.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council if anybody has any comments.
Just to, to add to the actions, definitely very supportive of, you know, whatever we can do as a city to find grant funding or, you know, use, even I know we have some of our climate ARPA funds left to support in the formation of, you know, whatever this community looks like, or supporting a staff person to be able to, to work on the cap because it's going to be important, and we should invest in that work. So, yeah. Thank you, David.
Could I get some clarification? So would we have a staff person designated for the cap, and then there would be one regionally that would be through the county or?
Yeah, yeah, there's still some decisions to be made about where that position would be housed. We have some, some likely candidates. I think, you know, for most of us, it makes sense to house that in an agency that isn't a jurisdiction that's responsible for implementing. And so, you know, I'd, I'd like to be able to report back on, on the progress of that in the future. For now, we would see the staff from each of the jurisdictions that's been participating as continuing those roles, and so for the city of Arcata, it's really been myself and Emily Benvey taking the lead for, for Arcata. There are staff from each of the different jurisdictions, and obviously, we all have different capacities, and, and we've also recognized that in our discussions. You know, the, the staff for, you know, Arcata and Eureka, they're on, you know, city staff that are, you know, paid through, you know, city sources. Some of the other jurisdictions have consultant staff, and so their, their participation may be, you know, more limited, but the main message, I guess, that I, I want to, you know, make sure that the council is, is comfortable with is that we have all committed to continuing this work and making sure that, you know, it, it, there's follow-through, that we're, we're making sure that we're moving it forward until we have that handoff to that regional manager.
Thank you.
And I do agree that it's important to have somebody outside of all of us that is ultimately responsible for making sure that we're all doing what we're supposed to do. So I, I support us, you know, working to find funds for helping to fund that position.
So in your work that you provided, you, the words you said, on-road transportation, did you look at anything regarding airplanes or air service and?
I actually don't know. I think probably not, but I can, I can find that out and report back.
Well, you don't have to, I've just, it just said on-road transportation, so it just made me think about other, you know, some people feel like air service is a big pollute to our area, but it's, I hope we can still keep it.
Yeah, there are definitely plans afoot to have everybody walk from here on out as opposed to flying.
Yeah, walk wherever.
I'm joking.
Denver.
I think because there, there are certain sectors that are outside the scope of a Climate Action Plan because we don't have jurisdictional authority over them. We have some nexus with transportation, but to be honest with you, the, the state and the federal emissions regulations are really the primary driver for transportation emissions. We have some land use authority that we can do to try and, you know, make, reduce vehicle miles traveled, and then we have public policy. And then we have public policy that we can implement to improve our public transportation systems. But, you know, for example, point source polluters aren't included in the Climate Action Plan. And that's statewide, that's not just in Arcata. And I believe air transit is probably outside of our purview as well, but I will report back to you on that.
No, I'm just, being that I'm on the Airport Advisory Committee, I just think about it and all the things that are happening at the airport and how important trans, how hard it's been for us to secure airlines or keep them, especially everyone wants to go north and that's really not been a possibility for quite some time. So I just would like to make sure that we can continue to have air service. Thank you.
Could I just, maybe for the public, maybe identify what point source polluters is?
Yeah, point source pollution is like if you have a factory and they've got a, you know, a stack and the pollution is coming from that single point source. There was, and the only reason I brought that up is because there was discussion early on about the fact that many of the reductions that we've seen in our overall greenhouse gas inventory are related to the reduction in point source pollution from, you know, yeah, from losing the cogen, the cogen plants. Yeah, the pulp mills. But those just aren't included.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions, thank you so much, Community Development Director, Aloya. Thank you. And we will move on. Is there any other staff reports? No. All right, we will, no?
No, I just want to make one comment that our police will be hosting open house this weekend, same weekend as the North Country Fair from 10 o'clock to 2:00 PM.
Excellent, that's a good report out. And let's go to council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Shaper.
Sure. I don't have a lot to report because RCA meets next week. So I'm still engaged. We'll have our last round of interviews for our Executive Director search this weekend, on Saturday, because that's the only day all of us busy local government people can find a time to get together. And so also, our next meeting, if you have been engaged in what RCA has been doing, I actually wasn't at our last meeting, but there was discussion over some power purchasing from the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Plant. There was a really good article on it in the North Coast Journal. And if that is something that you're interested in engaging with, the next RCA meeting is next Thursday at 3:30 at the Marina Room at the Warfinger Building. So the Bay Room is, I guess, what it's called. So come out for that if you're interested. And other than that, the Eye Block Party was a great success. And I know many of us also attended the Equity Arcata Home Away From Home Potluck, which had a great turnout and a good chance to connect with the new interim president of Cal Poly Humboldt was there as well. And he's been out at a lot of great local events. So that's good to see that connection and get to know him a bit better. And that's all I got. So, thank you.
Thanks. I have my HCOG meeting tomorrow, so I will have that information at our next meeting. But some other things of goings-ons in the past couple of weeks. I did go, it was in Eureka, but Hoppy did, they have a series and it was about contributions to our labor and business communities by Chinese people prior to the expulsion, like their, you know, the impact that those folks had on our economy in a positive way. And that was really interesting. It was at the Clark Museum and their, I believe the installation is still there, it's really interesting to look at. And I was at the Home Away From Home Potluck, which was really fun. And the students, a lot of the people that I talked to, it wasn't their first time, they'd been back and they just really liked the event. And it was really cool to see just random community members sitting at a table with students, interacting and making connections. So grateful to Equity Arcata for making that happen. There was the Out of the Darkness Suicide Awareness and Prevention Walk that started on the plaza and looped around town. I participated in that, it was a good turnout and a good, a good thing to bring awareness to that. And we did have, we were all at the ribbon cuttings that we had, a new water tank in Carlson Park. And that was really interesting from one extreme to the other, a water tank with virtually nobody there to Carlson Park with virtually everybody there. So that was interesting and fun. And then I did, I, well, we are part of Cal Cities, Arcata is, and I am the now Vice President to our Redwood Region Division. And each division got to appoint somebody for an equity committee that will be like a working group for a year. And I was appointed for our region to represent, so I'll be meeting with the people appointed from all the different regions in California. We'll be meeting via Zoom. And they say at VESC, so I'll read it off here, but the goals are, number one, to provide support to cities with the goal of strengthening their capacity to eliminate racial disparities, heal racial divisions, and build more equitable communities. And two, translating Cal Cities organizational diversity goals into intentional and consistent practices at all levels of the organization. And I'm hoping to really utilize the new person that we hire for Equity Arcata to help work. A lot of cities, I don't have an equity division or part of their city, you know, we're, again, kind of ahead of things on this. And so since we do have Equity Arcata and we will have that full-time position, I think it would be a really good thing for us to partner together and bring some of our work to that meeting. So I'm looking forward to that.
I love that, Stacy. I had my first meeting today as a Commissioner on the LAFCO Board, so just adding another tool to my toolbox, learning about, some more about land use. I also went to the Cal Cities meeting last week and I submitted my application to once again be on the Housing Community and Economic Development Committee for a League of California Cities. I really enjoyed that and learning about all the legislative policies that are coming down the pipeline and getting to kind of give my input and represent Arcata and Humboldt County. Again, I also attended the Home Away From Home and yeah, it was really sweet, I loved those events. And the construction on Crab's Ballpark has started and I'm really excited to see what that is going to look like.
So I had an Air Resources Board meeting this last week. And when you're talking about point source, I was thinking about how we have that point source that's always mentioned that takes place down in Scotia. And that is like what you were wondering about. So that's always an interesting meeting and we have supervisors that come to that, it's also from Del Norte and there's another one from Trinity. And then there's two from Humboldt County. And then I'm the city representative and I'm the only city representative for all those counties on that board. And so they meet around five times a year. So I really enjoyed the Eye Street Block Party, I thought it was excellent. It worked out really well, I think everyone was really happy with that. And the Cal Cities, we had to leave so quickly because of the dedications for a million gallon tank that's really quite beautiful. If anyone can ever get up there to see it, and maybe they shouldn't go see it, but nevertheless, it's really a, quite a thing. And I did go back for the dinner that evening, for the Cal Cities Dinner. And it's just interesting sometimes talking to people from other cities, trying to figure out what they can do in an economic way. And so we got into, especially the fellows from Lake County, started talking to them about their bird migration and how many grebes they have and what happens with all of those. And possibly they want to really look at putting together some kind of a bird festival. I talked to them about Gobwa Days and what we do and how they could always come to us and help us out and to talk to their, they aren't birders, but to talk to their local Audubon organization and see if they can pull something off. So I did that and was out at Woodman's Hall and it looks really good. And I'm glad that we're going to be moving forward on that for you all, for you. And I know you're excited and congratulations.
So thank you.
Well, I think these ladies already pretty much covered everything, but I want to say congratulations to Stacy on the Vice President for the Equity Committee. And I'm gonna go check out the Clark Museum and see the series contribution. I haven't been there, I'm glad that installation's still there. Let's see. Yeah, I attended, well, most everything that I've attended either happened already and then we've already met. So you'll have to wait for next time for other my meetings. But the only other city liaison meeting that I went to was the Cities Homeless Housing Working Group today. And we just received some updates from Arcata House Partnership on the warming, shelter warming centers. There is some angst about some operational funds, the county is also operating some warming centers as well, so they're gearing up. HTA, once again, will continue to offer free transit to the in-house community to reach those warming centers and the extreme weather shelters. And yes, there is an inaugural event in collaboration with Equity Arcata, City of Arcata, Cal Poly Humboldt. This is a bilingual author reading titled Huaca and Beyond. And there will also be a Takisa catered by Los Giros and that is tomorrow night, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at 4,700 Valley East Boulevard. You need to come because I painted for three days, they're making it party. And let's see, the Arcata Fire District is doing a strategic planned community survey as a component of the collaborative standard of cover analysis. And so this is a confidential survey, it's designed to provide every community member an opportunity to share opinions and ideas about the various components of the district. And yes, just to piggyback on that ribbon cutting, that if you haven't had an opportunity to go check out Carlson Park, the pickleball courts are awesome, they were full the day of the ribbon cutting, as well as the playground. And it looks like the Food Truck Friday was a great, they were full, so a lot of people got to enjoy that. And if you haven't taken a walk on the trail there, I would encourage you to go do it. Bring your birders friends or grab your kayak because there's some river fun awaiting you. And just to remind you that that is the only Med River access in the City of Arcata Limits. And yes, just to remind you, North Coast Country Fair, go visit the Arcata Police Department because they're going to be doing a barbecue with hot dogs and all the work. So that's all I have.
Something that wasn't mentioned too, because Arcata House Partnership is doing an open house at The Grove on Saturday from 12:00 to 4:00. And so lots of stuff happening, yeah, with North Country Fair and our own police department and The Grove putting that on. But should be a really cool opportunity to go out and connect with people and, you know, be in the space and there's going to be music and food and all that stuff, so.
All right, wonderful. Boy, we do a lot of things. Go us. I'm really proud of how involved you are. Okay, it's time for early oral communications. I know. The City Council values your comments. The public comment period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. This early section of public comment is limited to 15 minutes and speakers are limited to two minutes each. If you prefer to have a full three-minute time for your public comment, this item is continued to the end of the meeting. Where you'll be granted three minutes, please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listened on the agenda. So without further ado, you know what to do.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary. I'm looking at that beautiful earth flag on that beautiful pole, hoping it someday can be tried here, if not permanently or often, next to those of us who really believe the earth flag represents our future needs to what we need to do in the community. Greenhouse gas emissions, I've said it over and over again, we don't need to wait for a finalization before the City of Arcata can be in the vanguard, be ahead of everybody else, even in our region, reducing greenhouse gas emissions in whatever way we can do it, especially at things like events where a lot of people transport themselves there. We've got to find a better way for people to get there. So greenhouse gas emission reductions, greenhouse climate action plan, great. THC and CBD, you, City Manager Perry, have not been able to learn about my THC and CBD. T for transparency, trust and truth. H for honesty, humility and humanness. C for caring, compassion, connectedness. And the CBD is courage, bravery and decisiveness. Those are my hopes for the leadership here in this community. Finally, I'm hoping to head over to the community conversations that are happening right now at the Community Center. I left copies of this little flyer for people to know about, a film series that's ongoing. It's free, but you need to get reservations at the Minor Theater for the next film. It's called Shine a Light on Palestine Film Series. My friend was inspired to create this film series about that. And you got my email about the disturbing graffiti I witnessed and I thank those of you who responded to me. More to come. And this will not stop my being here talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anybody else that would like to make public comment during this period? Is there anyone on Zoom? That's you. Is anybody on Zoom?
No attendees on Zoom.
All right, I will go ahead and close early oral communication.
I would just like to mention one thing. When I went to the, I'm the liaison for Foam, and when I went to that meeting, they were talking about how they're going to, how they're going to be printing the next brochure that's going to talk about all the buildings, marshes, et cetera, we have. And they're in the process of going to probably print about 20, well, 2,500. And that's coming up soon. So I just wanted to let you know that they're quite active and that Foam, the Friends of the Arcata Marsh, helped pay for half of that and the city pays for the other half. So I just meant to mention that because there are many things that are going on. And also, the Foam, if you're a Foam member, they're going to soon have their annual luncheon and meeting.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Consent calendar, this is a long one, so I'm going to take a drink. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the City Council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of September 4th, 2024. B is bi-weekly report on disbursements. C, approve and award a construction contract for the 2024 Arcata Asphalt Grind Out and Inlay Project to GR Sundberg, Inc. in the amount of $165,330. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $16,533, 10% for a total not to exceed $181,863. Hand to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional paving work as necessary and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. D is award a contract not to exceed $368,340 to SHN Consulting Engineers and Geologists to provide a site investigation, sampling and remediation action plan for the Butcher Slu site and authorize the city manager to negotiate the final contract price and execute all applicable documents. E is to reappoint Tim Keefe and Ron Perry to the Historic Landmarks Committee for three-year terms ending September 30th, 2027. F, reappoint Michael Winkler to the Energy Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2027. G, reappoint Steve Cole to the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2027. H, reappoint Colin Fisk to the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2027. I, reappoint Josh Wolfe to the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee for a three-year term ending September 30th, 2027. J, approve the purchase of three claw valve pressure reducing valve vault systems in the amount of $181,741.90 plus sales tax. Authorize the city engineer to increase the purchasing amount by up to $18,174.19, 10% for a total of $199,916.09 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional equipment as necessary and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable agreements and documents. K, approve the Arcata Compensation Agreement with the affected taxing entities and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. L, award a contract for the Tank 1 AB Perimeter Fence Project to CR Fence Company, DBA Humboldt Fence Company, in the amount of $64,700. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to 5%, $3,235 for a total amount not to exceed $67,935 to allow for unforeseen contingencies and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And I would like to pull items G, H and I due to incorrect term limits listed on the agenda. The term limit for the TUTOC Committee members is four years and not three. The term limit for the TUTOC committee members is four years and not three years. Does anybody else want to pull any other things?
We need to pull, did you say E and F?
No, they're correct.
Those are three-year terms.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So anything else? All right, does anybody in the public wish to make any comments on any item on the consent calendar except for GH and I? Anybody on Zoom? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion for items A through F and then items J through L.
Second.
Right, motion by Councilwoman Schaefer, second by Vice Mayor Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'm going to ask that, I'm going to ask that we make all the motions GH and I separately and amend them to four-year, ending September 2028, so.
Okay, so I'll take the first one.
Oh, do we have any public comment on those?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, all right, go ahead. Sorry.
I'll take the first one again. G, reappoint Steve Cole to the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee for a four-year term, ending September 30th, 2028.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take the next one.
I'll go ahead and take the next one, so that would be to reappoint Colin Fisk to the Transactions Use and Overs, Tax Oversight Committee for a four-year term, ending September 30th, 2027.
Eight.
Eight, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll do the next one again. Reappoint Josh Wolfe to the Transaction and Use Tax Oversight Committee for a four-year term, ending September 30th, 2028.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I would just like to thank many of these people that have been reappointed to these committees. Tim Keefe and I were appointed on the same day, me to the Economic Development Committee and him to the Historic Landmarks Committee, so I'm so glad to see so much continuity. I know Michael Winkler has probably been on the Energy Committee for a minute, so thank you, everybody, for that.
And for those that act as the chairs of those committees too, as Michael Winkler is currently doing. So thank you.
New business, adopt resolution number 245-09, updating the city's investment policy. And can we have a staff report from Finance Director Tabitha Millay? Nice to have you back.
I got lulled by the consent calendar, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. What we're asking you to do tonight is take a review and update the city's current investment policy, really to bring it into compliance and, and consistent with state code. Just a few items to let you know about. The investment policy is really the guidelines that establish how a jurisdiction invests their funds, their, their excess funds. And much of this is controlled by the California Government Code, so it really sets the broad parameters. And you can see by the dates that are listed there that this is one of those housekeeping items that we should probably be doing every year, and it hasn't been done for a number of years, and it's actually been on the list of things for finance to do for many years. So we're taking care of it, bringing up its current, and also sort of implementing some of the practices and requirements that are in our current code that really we have not as a department kept current for, I believe, many, many, many years. Just a few items that I wanted to point out in your investment policies, and these are pretty universal. As I said, there's not a lot of deviation from what's in the state code, and even the standards, things like that second item, the objectives are pretty universal in investment, investment policies around the United States, in order, safety, liquidity and return, and that's really important. These are public funds, and so making sure that we secure those and don't take risk in order to chase returns or investment earnings is, is really probably the key to a city investment policy. As I, I mentioned before, the California Government Code is pretty robust about what it sets forth as far as what cities can invest in, how long they can invest funds, how much money they can have in different types of investments, and they even set out standards and recommendations for process. For example, although it complies with the groups there, really three of their best practices are having an investment policy. It's not mandatory, but it's highly recommended. Having quarterly reports presented to the council that, so that you can see what's happening with your investments, and then reviewing the policy annually. And part of the reason for reviewing the policy annually, annually is that our government code is subject to changes every year, so really the only way to stay current is to look at that and make those sort of housekeeping changes on a regular basis. I've got a list of all kinds of acronyms there, and I did that because they were too hard to spell out, but really what those are, are government finance groups that have recommended, you know, those basic things, that you have a policy, that you provide regular reports and that you check in on an annual basis. It's the Government Finance Officers Association, the California Municipal Treasurers Association, the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission, and the Association of Public Treasurers. So all of sort of the groups that my folks belong to, which is kind of a nerdy group that nobody knows those acronyms but us. Something else that I think is really important to point out, and this is a really basic standard, it's really probably one of the fundamental things in the policy, is that as the person who chooses the investments for you and/or chooses the third party that helps us put those investments together, the prudent investment standard really talks about the duty that we owe because these are public funds, the skill that we need and care that we need to bring to that job, the prudence that we, is required, and then just due diligence. And so I want to stress that those things are all important. Maturity is limited to five years or less, and that's by state code, and it's also reflected in your policy. And again, that's really about that number one item up there, number one and number two, which is safety and liquidity. It's important with, with funds that don't belong to us that we take that care. And the last item here that I wanted to, to point out is that our policy does require that we hold three months of, of operating expenses in short-term investments. That's equal to $10 million. In a couple slides, I'll give you a breakdown of where our dollars are now. We're, we're currently keeping more than that, but that has a lot to do with the capital projects that we have going and the fact that we're, we're spending those funds and waiting for reimbursement, so we need a little bit more liquidity at this point in time. The changes are, are pretty straightforward. If you've read through the red line, there are a lot of them, but a lot of them are just small shifts in definitions, they're adding language. There's a few places where we've expanded the investment parameters. Those all still fall within government code. And then there's been expansion on the relationships the city has with the folks that help us with our investments and making sure that those, that are, that the diligence, the standards and the ethics are really in place to make sure that the city funds are taken care of. One of the requirements, and I'm, I'm putting this up because it's something that we haven't for a long time been good about providing you regular reports on the investments, and so if I put it here and I tell you we're going to do it, you'll hold me accountable to it. We're going to incorporate this into the quarterly reports, the financial reports that we've started giving you, but we, the, the government code strongly encourages us to provide those within 45 days at the end of the quarter and list some really basic information so that it's uniform from entity to entity within the state. A listing of the assets, the maturity, so that you can make sure that we're not going too far out and we've got that liquidity we need. Average credit quality so that you know that we're safe and our investments are secure. And then time-weighted rates of return, so you can benchmark those against potentially other entities that are publicizing what their interest in investment earnings are. And then I have to make a verification that we're complying with our policy and also that we have sufficient cash flow for the next six months. So again, it's really good information for you to have. We probably won't go through a formal staff report every time, we'll just include it on the consent calendar for you to have and so that the public also has access to that. Something that has come up, I know before my, my time here and, and even when we had conversations about CalPERS investments, socially responsible investing, and we have built this into the policy, and we've also got some separate investment directives that we provide to our third-party management agency Chandler Asset Management. And so that we have limited where we can invest when it comes to a few types of companies. The top one is extranch, those companies that are primarily get revenues from extraction and/or production of fossil fuels, tobacco and tobacco products, nuclear weapons or nuclear weapon components. The last, this one, production of nuclear energy is one that we might want to relook. It is in your policy, it's been in your policy for a long time, but I know that there has been some reconsideration of that. So again, it's in there, but, but it's something you may want to relook at. And then the, the last one is also a little bit antiquated, but it is in your policy. It's investments through the World Bank in, for companies and countries that have a record of gross ecological and environmental degradation, violations of rights of workers, and then violation of human rights. So I can tell you that we're probably not even looking at those types of investments, but it's not something bad to, to have. It's certainly something that we should want to be reminded of.
Can I ask a quick question, Tabitha, because I was literally just looking at this part when you said this, but I don't see extraction of fossil fuels in, in the document.
It's, and you, that's a very good, that's a very good point. It's in the investment directive, and the reason that it was done that way was because it was something that I was able to send directly after we had the conversation about Cal, the CalPERS investments. I sent it directly to them and they implemented it immediately. And I can provide you a copy. I'll actually add that to the investment reports when we provide those next month so that you could see that it's there.
Okay, because that was my main question on all of this, so thank you for answering it early.
And can I just get clarification, and I apologize if I'm missing it, but, so then we no longer invest in any fossil fuel like Chevron or any of those companies at this time?
And I'm going to correct you there. No longer is probably a misstatement. I don't believe, at least looking over what we've invested in quite a while, I don't believe we ever did, but we now are no longer allowed to.
Okay, so we don't need to be worried about divestment of these companies? We're, we're doing.
And, and in truth, those are, you know, because they're, they're, those types of investments aren't typical of municipalities anyways, just because they're not, not necessarily, they've, they're not as highly rated as they were, let's say, 10, 15, 20 years ago. They're obviously a little bit more volatile, they have political ramifications that we're talking about, but yeah, we, at least in any near future, we have not, so.
And I was really hoping that we might be more, invest more in like local housing and solar and renewable energy, and we'll get ongoing reports on what we're trying to look at those?
So I, I don't know that we're, those are tough things for us to invest. I mean, we invest in them as a city through CDBG grants, through our housing programs, but when we say invest, there's kind of two types of investments. The, the money that we get that's dedicated to those purposes, we can take more risk with those because they're set up for that process. We want to be really careful about how we invest, the, the city taxpayer funds that are sort of our ongoing operations, our excess funds that are sort of outside of that, because we really need to make sure that we don't lose them.
Yeah.
And, and that we don't have defaults and that sort of thing. So I don't know that we'll, I don't know that we can invest in those types of things within our policy or within state law, but certainly from the standpoint of programs, the city has done quite a bit of investing in those, those types of, of efforts, but probably not these types of funds.
Thank you.
This is just, this is a, is a snapshot in time, but I thought it would be helpful to kind of talk a little bit about where the, the city's current cash is, is sitting and how it's managed, and it's pretty, pretty basic. We have what we call our direct investments, and those are the ones that have, are managed by Chandler Asset, Asset Management and have been for a long time. As you can see, it's just under $24 million, and those are going to be longer-term investments. Those are going to be ones that typically are going to range, they're, they're, the average maturity is about two and a half years, but they're going to range from, you know, maturing right away to up to that five-year maximum that we can. I can tell you, as you, as you can see, the vast majority of that money is pretty conservative. It's sitting in just U.S. government issues, which are going to be your T-bills, notes and, and notes, and then your, your government agencies, which have the full backing of the government. So they're probably, they're, they're the gold star as far as secure, stable investments. I will say also though, that they typically are going to be of the lower interest rates. So it is one that doesn't necessarily give us, you know, as much return, and they, because that's a little longer maturity, it, it's, it's a stable return, but it's, it's, it keeps, it is something that we are trying to expand a little bit and have a little bit more diversity in so that, one, so that we have a little bit higher earnings, but also so that we have different maturities. The next area, and I think we've talked about this before, is the California Local Agency Investment Fund, or R.L.A.F., and you can see that we've got about $15.6 million as of August 31st in that account. This is really what we use for, this is the state fund. It's the, the fund that's managed by the treasurer, and it's actually, you'll, I'll have a slide just after this, it's actually lumped in with the rest of the state agencies. So together, it's about 100, and I think it's $178 billion that the state manages. But the reason that this is really important to us is that it's liquid. So I can log on in the morning, and as long as I make a transfer before 10 o'clock, I can do a same-day transfer. So it allows me to quickly move money in and out of our U.S. Bank operating account where we don't really earn any interest, and so we're, we're moving money to cover the bills, but we're not having funds sit and not earn interest. And so that is really important to us. And again, typically, it wouldn't be necessarily that high, but because of all the money we're spending on capital projects and the fact that we're fronting the money and getting reimbursed, it is a key point. And then we've got a number of accounts, operating accounts at U.S. Bank. As of August 31st, we had almost $5 million. I normally don't keep that much money in that account, I keep basically just what we have in outstanding checks, but I was on vacation in August, at the end of August, so I didn't want to leave without, you know, making sure that we were covered for the time I was gone. But again, it's about $44.5 million at this point in time. I know that there was also some interest in what L.A.F. has invested in, in the past, and I wanted to let you know that they put out, and there's a link at the bottom there, if you're interested, and I'll even send that to anybody who wants to take a look. They actually put out quarterly a listing of their specific investments, and so I went through and checked to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that would violate our current policies, you know, as far as fossil fuels, you know, tobacco, nuclear weapons, those sorts of things. And they're, they're really limited, because they're limited by state code, just like we are, to the same things that we're going to be investing in. So that's available, you're welcome to take a look at it, I'll send it, and if you're interested, I'll include it. It's about 40 pages, but it can also be included in the packet going forward for the quarterly reports.
Could I ask you, so do you get some kind of alert, letting you know if they've changed or added? I mean, obviously because they have a very, they're limited also, but do you have to police it, or?
I'm just, no, I don't police it. We do look through, like I said, and I'm not, you have to remember that there's a lot more people at the state level that are going to be looking at the investments of the state treasurer, and they're, they're going to comply with their laws. It doesn't mean, you know, it, it, it's just, there's too many people there that that would be. It's probably, the, the bigger issue is probably kind of what we're here to, today to do, which is keeping up with all the changes in the state code to make sure that our policy is compliant with state law. That piece is a little bit more challenging, and again, part of the reason we're here is because we just haven't done a good job of making those adjustments and coming back to you on an annual basis. I don't know that there's anything, because we haven't had a policy that was compliant, I don't think we've violated it, you know, in any sense of the word, that we've invested in things that have changed, but anything big, we would know about. Anything small, I can't tell you that we would know until we go looking for it. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions, and what we are asking you to do tonight is just pass the resolution that would update the policy, and if you happen to have anything you wanted changed, we could certainly bring that back with revisions.
Well, I'd say in the past, the councils, the past councils have been really concerned about our investment policies, and I think they, the direction has been the way that the city would like to be known for going. So I don't know if anyone else has comments, but otherwise I would move for adoption.
Can I ask just like one clarifying question? So, because under the socially responsible section, because it says, is it all weapons or is it just nuclear weapons?
It is just nuclear weapons.
Divest from the arms dealers, but yeah. I mean, that's one thing I'd like to see in general. I mean, that's one thing I'd like to see in general, but I don't, you know, know if that's, tonight's the night for that, but, or if that's even possible in our current configuration from the state. Because I know that state, like funds and index funds and mutual funds invest in a lot of companies like, I don't know, Boeing and Raytheon and et cetera, but...
I haven't looked, to be honest, I haven't gone through their list. I don't know that there's much on there, and we certainly, you know, we certainly would not directly invest in those. And we could certainly, we could say that to the, you know, that could be the city position, and I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah, and within that too, there are a lot of lines between like manufacturing things that are not weapons and manufacturing things that are weapons by the same company too, which I know, you know, puts it in a difficult spot. But just going to say my piece on that and leave it at that. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
I just have one comment too. I just want to recognize our finance director. She doesn't, we went over this, this report in this investment policy, and one of the things she pointed out to me is just how active she is in our investments and trying to get more of a return. And it's something that you don't see in this investment policy, but it's something that's certainly affecting the city in a positive way. So I wanted to make sure that we recognize her kind of drive and motivation to do a better job for the city.
Yeah, we're extremely fortunate to have financial director.
I concur. And more that you present, the more I'm grasping and understanding. So thank you for, from a layperson here who was clueless when I came on board. I feel like I am in the know now, more than I was anyway on day one. Appreciate you.
And with that, yes, let's open it up for public comment on this agenda item.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGarry. I decided to stick around because, as you know, how the city responds to things like global investing and global situations is important to me, and that it's important to other people. I do know there is a city in Maine, I believe, that just passed a resolution on divesting from companies in the state of Israel. And I think we will have people in this community who are interested in that concept. The prudent man, or the prudent investment strategy, is something I learned about when I was working for a nonprofit that had a lot of money invested in things. And, you know, I think some of those real specific socially responsible investment things are important to keep track of and keep looking at, and maybe get more specific or add to or take from. But I just want to make you aware, and I think you are aware, but the divestment movement is alive and well in the United States of America. And so, you know, take that into consideration in your leadership of our community and what people in our community really want our community to be. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anybody on Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom.
All right. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion or any other discussion.
Well, I would move for the council to adopt resolution number 245-09, updating the city's investment policy for the investment of public funds of the city of Arcatah and its related entities.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Stillman, and a second by Councilmember White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
All right, it is time for oral communications once again. This is a three-minute period. If you've already spoken in the beginning, you cannot speak at the end, but if there's anybody else that would like to speak, now is your chance. Anybody on Zoom? All right, I will go ahead and close. Public comment? Oh, look, it states a future meetings. Everybody okay with October 30th? Everybody better show up.
I'm going to check my calendar on that one.
Oh, I adjourned. Sorry, I was on my microphone. Adjourned.